Let's get our meeting started. Please have a seat. We'll start having a prayer by Pastor Darren McClellan from United Methodist here in Fairhope.
Gracious and loving God, we thank you for the gift of this season and the day that you have given us. In this time of anticipation, as we await your coming among us, we ask that your Spirit would be with us now, even in these proceedings. And as we examine our hearts and our motives and our desires and our aspirations this evening, we ask that you might fill us with things like love and patience, kindness, gentleness, and self-control. Remind us, oh God, there is no law against these things. May your presence be with us tonight and always, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, there is an agenda item. Let's go back. We will keep Agenda Item Number 20, per legal counsel, on the agenda with Ben in the polls. Now, Marcus, that does not have to be rewritten at all?
It will have to be amended to a sole source provider. It's based on the code section that's on it. There's a special, again, can explain it.
Yeah, I got it.
There's a special coding on this. It's a patented anti-corrosive adhesive that is only bought from Myers-Platt. And so we can go with that and go ahead and get them ordered over that sole source provider.
But the code that's on here, which code is that? I've read it a thousand times, but I do not have it memorized by heart.
Code one sixteen fifty-one D seven. And then just go.
For the sole source provider? Got it. Okay, got it. That's the only part I need to add.
Based on sole source provider.
Got it.
Who are we walking this on?
Yes. So also, we will add an Agenda Item Number Twenty-seven. If someone would like to make a motion to walk this on, please.
I'll make a motion to walk on a resolution for materials for batting cages for the Recreation Department.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Motion carries. We'll walk this on, and this will be Number Twenty-eight, Twenty-seven. Excuse me, Lord. All right. All right, guys. All right. Can I get a motion for Agenda Item Number One, its approval of minutes, from our November twenty-seventh regular City Council meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Report from our mayor, our beautiful mayor.
Thank you, council. First, I just want to thank the city employees for the Christmas parade, all the holiday activities that they put on throughout the season for our community. It was a great parade. I think everybody really enjoyed it. Perfect weather, even though we had to reschedule. Thank goodness it was perfect weather, and I think, you know, it was just a great parade, and I think everybody had a great time. Tonight, we have Ashton Sawyer with us. Ashton is with Troop Forty-seven here in Fairhope, and he did his Eagle Scout project and would like to tell you about that. And Ashton, while you're making your way up, do I have another troop here that needs to be recognized?
We are with PAC Forty-seven, the AOLs that are working.
Okay, good. You're gonna do that, Ashton? You're recognizing?
Well, he's actually eighty-seven.
He's eighty-seven. You're eighty-seven, and they're PAC Forty-seven. Okay, good. Thank y'all for being here tonight. We appreciate it. Come on up.
Hello, everyone. Just want to thank you all for letting me be here, letting me talk to you all. As she said, my name is Ashton Sawyer. I'm part of Scout Troop Fifty-eighty-seven. There's been a bit of confusion on what troop I'm in, but I can assure you, it's Fifty-eighty-seven. So for those who don't know, if you currently were to go down to the Fairhope Municipal Park, there is now twenty-four wooden signs and posts with QR codes labeling the name and scientific name of the tree. This project begun a year and a half ago when I met with the mayor discussing potential projects that would help out the city, and we decided on some sort of interactive tree trail. We weren't certain on where. We thought at Knoll Park at first, but there were some complications there. And while doing research, I came across the pre-existing Eagle Project from nineteen ninety-nine down in the Fairhope Beach Park Tree Trail, and all the signs that were supposedly there were all gone, are all damaged or stolen. So we made it our project to remake them and make them new and better than before. So I started researching the trees that would be there, walking down in the area, discovering what trees were still there, what trees weren't there, what needed to be changed around. And then I started writing the website or the PDF that the QR code would scan to, and that took quite a lot of energy and time, but after a while and quite a few delays on my part, the project was ready to move into a physical form in the form of wooden posts and the plaques with the QR codes on them that are now there. This project has taught me a lot about planning and managing time, as well as making decisions and deliberating, and better organization, as well as challenging myself and my fellow scouts who were there, working out with me. None of them are there right now, but if they're somehow seeing this, thank you to the, like, six people who came out and helped me.
You gotta take one more look, just to make sure no one showed up, correct?
Yes. And along the way, thanking them, I'd like to personally publicly thank the following people. Mayor Sherri Sullivan for greenlighting and proposing the project, and just helping out along the way. Jamie Rollins, the City Horticulturist, as well as Paul Fontenot of the Tree Committee. George Ladd and Paige Crawford from Public Works and Public Affairs. Mae Moss Parker of the Wisteria Garden Club, who helped a lot when we were out there, as well as the Tree Committee for helping me and my mother identify the best trees to put the signs by. And Morgan Slay of Riverbend and East Bay Engravings for helping make the plaques themselves. And the forester, Patrick Waldrup, who gave us the idea of making them QR codes. I hope that this project of mine and all the signs will last a while and inspire people to go outside and explore Fairhope. This project was a real challenge to me, but it wouldn't have been possible without the city and everyone who helped me. Thank you.
Thank you, young man. Thank you, Ashton.
Congratulations.
Good job, kid.
What Ashton didn't tell you is this kind of is a legacy project for his family because his grandfather, Mike Ford, you know, was very active on the Tree Committee and part of this tree trail. He worked on that when he was here on the council. So it's a great project and very fitting that Ashton helped refurbish this tree trail, and will continue to serve generations from here on out. And, you know, we had a pamphlet before that identified the trees. We'll probably redo that pamphlet. And again, the QR codes are such a great addition to that because you can just scan them right there and get all the information on the tree that you would like to have. So it's gonna be great. So, thank you, Ashton. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
With the folks from Troop Forty-seven or PAC Forty-seven, y'all wanna come up and tell why you're here? One of you wanna come up and tell why you're here, if you're working on a badge? Maybe not?
Badge of silence.
Or not. Public speaking to come next. We'll work on that.
Okay. Okay. You wanna come up?
So in the meantime, the trees are on the north beach, right?
They are. They're on the north bar, north beach. Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes my report. Thank you, council.
All right. Thank you. All right. So next, we'll have public participation for Agenda Items Six through Twenty-seven. Six through Twenty-seven. Agenda Items Six through Twenty-seven.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name's Gary Gover. I'm three hundred Lincoln Street in Fairhope. This morning, I had a chance to take a look at the agenda, and I spotted the item on the fireworks for New Year's. I had some thoughts about the environmental issues that might be associated with those displays which Fairhope has become really good at over the years. And it took me about one minute to use artificial intelligence to come up with a pretty complete, thorough, and impressive list of issues to give some thought to. These don't have to be addressed this time around, but in the future, I want to give a lot of thought to going to some other kinds of technology to facilitate these big public displays. I used the artificial intelligence. It took me less than a minute to get all the research done and prepare the statement. And I think that made me think that there's good reason to think that the advent of artificial intelligence tools, most of which are free for the public and for workers in the city's staff, to put together, to do this whole job. So you might, in the future, expect some real increases in efficiencies and effectiveness and in your own research and idea development on issues that come up for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gover. All right. Anybody else with public participation? You have three minutes. Agenda Items Six through Twenty-seven.
My name is William Rodney Silcox. I live at eighty-three fifty-one U.S. Highway Ninety-eight in Barnwell. I called the mayor's office back in September on three different occasions. Also, I called in August. I have not heard one word about the people not stopping for the bus for my children to get on and off. Every day, it's like a Hunger Games. I have to walk outside and dodge traffic and scream and holler and throw coffee cups to get the vehicles to stop so my kids can get on the bus. There's been several times I've almost been run over in the highway. I called the mayor's office to get signs put up to let people know that a bus stops there, and I've heard no word as of yet. I spoke with the chief this afternoon that overheard me talking to another individual. I hope that perhaps this will fall on some ears that will listen for the safety of my children. I could only imagine if it would have been her kids, something would have already been done. That's all I have to say.
All right. Anybody else? Agenda Items Six through Twenty-seven. I wish you would've stayed, but it's gone. All right? Anybody else? All right. Council comments?
Yeah.
Councilman Burrell?
Just a couple. I just want to echo what the mayor said earlier. Once again, I get to go first, so I know you all thinking the same thing. Thanks to everybody that participated and helped out with the Christmas parade. It was a lovely night. The weather was perfect. And mayor, especially, thank you and Paige for giving us some candy that we could actually throw to the people without putting their eye out, so we didn't have those suckers or those little sticks this year. That was much appreciated. No hard candy or anything like that, although I think Jay did hit one kid in the eye with a piece of candy, but other than that, it was pretty good.
It was a good aim.
That's all.
Councilman Conyers?
I just want to say congrats to Ashton on that project. Is your Eagle Scout ceremony already taking place?
It has not taken place. I have to pass my board review. I completed. The project was officially turned in to the council two days before my eighteenth birthday.
All right.
The ultimate deadline. But as long as it was in before that ultimate deadline, I'll have my board review scheduled, and I'll have my ceremony and officially be recognized.
Well, some people perform best under pressure, so nothing like a time deadline. But congratulations. I really do look forward to going out and seeing your project and using the QR codes to maybe learn a little bit. And Crystal, love your festive appearance tonight, so glad to have you here always. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Brother Robinson? Councilman Robinson?
No, no. Jack said it. You know, thanks to everybody who helps put on the Christmas parade. The weather was great. Parade was great. Big crowd, and it's just always a lot of fun.
Councilman Burrell?
Unfortunately, I'd love to tell you how great the Christmas parade was, but I had to miss it due to some illnesses. But I would've been there on the original date, but sometimes things don't tend to work out too well, and that is my favorite parade of all year. I hope everybody had a wonderful time. And Ashton, always remember, tomorrow is forever.
Amen. You'll figure that out later in life. That's one of those. Don't hurt yourself right now. All right. So I also was at the Christmas parade. You know, I had people come up to me and tell me that we have the best Christmas parade ever. Now, I didn't see it, but they had swords. They were throwing, people were catching swords and little smart gadgets, and it was really nice. Nothing painful or harmful, but really cool stuff, you know? Who was throwing that?
Not me.
Oh, it wasn't you? Well, the kids had swords, and they was very happy with our parade because of all the little gadgets that we were throwing. So had a lot of good comments.
We were not throwing them.
We were not throwing swords. I didn't throw a sword, but constituents, the people, the citizens had swords. But once again, I'm gonna piggyback, good job on everybody for putting that on. It takes a lot of work. People don't understand how much work that takes, but it really does. All right, guys, let's move forward. Agenda Item Number Five has been taken off, so we were taking that one off. So we'll start with Agenda Item Number Six. Can someone please introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
All right. Annexation Nicole Scopolites Administrate Tracks for the estate of James M. Scopolites, containing four point six acres, more or less, property located at eight-six-one-one Gayford Avenue Extension, Fairhope, Alabama, Tax Parcel forty-six oh-two. So are we, I guess we talked about this one. We'll just let this one lay over for a couple of weeks. There was no issues with this. I think Hunter spoke about this one.
There's no rush to vote on it, is there?
That's exactly right. So we'll let this one lay over for a little bit, guys. All right. Agenda Item Number Seven. Resolution. The city of Fairhope approves the procurement of a three-year lease renewal on the Hewlett-Packard Design plotter on NAPSO contract for thirty-six-month lease and service agreement for total fiscal year expense not to exceed three thousand five hundred twenty-three thousand fifty-three cents, and to authorize Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute the lease agreement and service You get a motion, guys?
I got a motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Number Eight. Agenda Item Number Eight. Resolution. The mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Watermark Design for Professional Architectural and Engineering Services for RFQ, Fairhope Municipal Pool Rehabilitation Phase Two Design Documentation with a not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We spoke about this one in depth. For those, we changed that number of one-seven to one-twenty on purpose in the work session. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Nine. Resolution to award bid number twenty-three zero-three oh Consulting Services for FEMA Public Assistance Management Services, Government Services to Royal Engineering and Consultants, LLC, and the cost of this contract will be determined if it is activated at the time of the disaster.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Again, nine and ten are things that we hope we never have to use.
We hope we never have to use, but I do have one question, Kim or Richard, as far as discussion of the price at that time.
Right.
Like, I don't know if I like that, to be honest. You know, I mean, there was something I made in my notes about that, and I did not, so I apologize, I did not talk about it in the work session, but I remember that bothered me when I was reading it the first time.
So it has quoted, and there's quoted prices?
Hourly rates.
Those are the hourly rates. That's what they can charge us. What is stated on there is the hourly rate.
So that's what it is?
Yes, it's hourly rate. Now, how FEMA would be is how we get reimbursed. That is at a hundred percent. It's a hundred percent federal, and it's based on the storm. So we get a total dollar amount, so like in Sally, we were able to have administrative costs, a little over six hundred thousand dollars. So it depends on the storm, and then FEMA will pay us a hundred percent of the administration cost. The administration cost also is some of our internal staff time also.
Okay. So the prices that the council sees that's present in our press are the hourly rates, those will not change?
Those will not change.
Okay.
Those will not change. If we have a storm in two years from today, and FEMA is gonna look at that current contract that, you know, mayor will sign, they were gonna, they will look at those rates.
Okay.
What's in that contract.
All right. Thank you.
A question for you, Kim. So, and this doesn't have to do with debris removal. That's a separate contract. And then we also had someone that we have hired that saved us a lot of money by overseeing the debris removal to make sure that...
That's the separate...
That is what, that's what I...
No, no. So we have a debris removal, which is Crowder Gulf. We have True North, who is a monitor.
Monitor and service. That's what I was looking at.
And then this company here will help with putting the claims together to submit to FEMA. And I had asked for us to do two separate bids, one that I wanted to make sure we had a company that specializes in utilities and the mutual aid on making sure we capture the most costs that we can. And then, but the one company that bid on both packages has experience in the debris claims monitoring and then also in the utilities.
So are you, so thank you for clarifying that, because I was thinking of the True North contract when I was thinking of this. So do you have experience with these companies?
I do not. I do not. I had gone to a presentation at Riviera Utilities that Royal came in and done a presentation with utilities. Robert Stell was there, Fairhope was there, but they did a presentation on being able to help with the claims process. But we just went through all the ones that bid. We went through all their documentation.
I saw that. You scored them.
Yeah, we scored them.
They scored. It was five, six, seven? It was seven. And that was a good number. And the highest was like eighty-seven, which was Royal. The next was eighty-four, I believe. Next one, that was seventy-nine.
And True North, who done it last time, did not bid.
That was an AC. That was a, somebody with an F. Yep. Okay. All right. So, all right, very good.
But that's a different bid. But True North is still overseeing the debris removal.
That is right.
Okay.
True North is the monitor that will...
Okay. When you said they didn't bid, they still have the other contract?
Yes.
As the monitoring, for the debris removal, for debris removal. But they did do this last time. Okay. All right.
So we have True North, which is the overseer of everything. We have Crowder that actually picks up our debris, and maybe we'll have Royal if we choose to vote on Royal. Is that correct?
Right. And True North, what they do is they send monitors with Crowder Gulf, and so they're taking every load that's picked up. That's how they do monitors. That's what they're responsible for.
And they're still in place.
That's correct.
And if we vote on this group, they will oversee all of that.
All the paperwork.
Getting our money back, and then the utilities part as well.
Correct. And we've never done a utility. This is the first time we've ever done a utility, but a lot of utilities do this, and it's very helpful because that was our beast during Sally, is the mutual aid and all the utility contracts.
Okay.
Yes. They'll be assisting the finance office on making, going through these claims, helping us gather the data, help us gather time sheets. You know, Hurricane Sally was tremendous for staff of handling it, and True North did a good job, but when it came down to our utility, there was a weakness there.
Okay. All right. All right, guys. Can I get, can we vote on it? Can I get, we've had discussion?
Number Nine, you have a motion and a second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Agenda Item...
I think we need to do ten now, don't we?
Number Ten. Resolution to award bid number twenty-three oh-three one Consulting Services for FEMA Public Assistance Management Services Utility Damage Projects to Royal Engineers and Consultants, LLC, and the cost of this contract will be determined if it is activated at the time of a disaster.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Eleven. Resolution that the mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Watershed for Professional Architectural and Engineering Services for RFQ, Nature Center Building Rehabilitation with a not-to-exceed amount of forty-eight thousand dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. We talked about this a little bit, and I'm gonna take the time to let Rebecca come up and say something. You want to say anything, Rebecca? You didn't get this...
I was here in case you had questions. I'm good. We're really excited about it.
I have a couple. So there's a two-part to this that I saw in the details, Rebecca. There was one part for the forty-eight thousand, and then I saw a second part that you would like to do, that you spoke of, for some additional things for this particular project. Is that something that you think, you know...
We'll go ahead.
That needs, you know, those things are vital as well, going forward?
We included those, just so you guys could start to think about that scope, so as funds became available. It might be something that could be added into the project. It was for the furnishings, to make it a useful, you know, classroom, welcome center, you know, also for signage. So things like, you know, meeting tables, desks, reception area, and signage, and then for the landscaping around that building to sort of demonstrate landscaping with native plants, water conservation, et cetera.
I would like to see, and I told Ms. Love this, but I would like to see something, it would be great. Now, this is just my, you know, my opinion, but something with conservation, living, so it's kind of like at Gulf, the new Gulf State Park where the kids can go in the cabins, where all the cabins are named after trees, and then you flush the toilet, and the air conditioner is the water for the toilet, and all, it's a living home. Is that correct? Or something like that? Can we do anything like that, just to put, just to talk about?
I think there's a lot of opportunities, since it's not being built from scratch, it's not as wide open.
Okay.
But there's a lot of opportunities with the renovation, definitely with water conservation, with energy conservation and resilience.
Right.
Where, and, you know, we can look for those opportunities, and maybe it's schematic design, you know, present them to the city. Here's how far we could go. And the idea of signage could highlight aspects of the building that support the environment of the park, as well as just teaching you about the nature of the park.
Yeah, and there's a great opportunity for grants when you're doing things like that as well, correct?
Absolutely. Absolutely, with new, our funding for weatherization for climate resilience by making buildings more energy efficient and fortified, so I, I think there's, I love that idea, we are on the same page.
Yeah.
Exactly, that if you're, if you're going to bring it, you know, bring it up, let's, let's bring it up in the right way, and it's, it's got good bones, it's a beautiful building, there's some, it's been added on to over time, there's some interesting roof lines, and we're gonna look for opportunities to simplify that and make it more resilient.
Very good, all right, all right, thank you, council, y'all have anything?
All it takes is money.
That's it, and I'm hoping we can get some grant money for that, Councilman Burrell. Very good, because I just think it'd be so good for our children, and just to have that park be a national park, where people come here to see that park, and represent it at that level of intelligence, I just think it's something to that, you know, to set that precedent, as far as Fairhope is concerned. Anyway, thank you, Ms. Bryan, I appreciate you.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, all right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. All right, agenda item number twelve, resolution, the mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Gresham Smith for professional engineering services for RFQ, Section, Section Street resurfacing in the central business district with a not-to-exceed amount of fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars. We spoke on this one in the work session as well, Richard came up and spoke to us about this.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. All right, agenda item number thirteen, resolution, the mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc., for professional engineering services for RFQ, for sewer main upgrade with a not-to-exceed amount of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And this is a design with construction oversight, guys, we spoke about this one.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Does a, reimbursed with Restore Act money?
Nope, not this one.
But it's a requirement.
Was that the next one?
The next one is.
I thought I heard Restore Act on that.
It's, it's required for.
Supplement to it, okay. Okay, maybe that's what I heard in the work session then. I heard, I wrote down, I heard Restore, somebody mentioned.
That was Restore somewhere, I read it myself.
It's, it's this one, it's a requirement for that.
Requirement for Restore.
Then requirement is what it was.
Yep, that's right. All right, did we vote on it?
Nope.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? All right, motion carries, guys. Agenda item number fourteen, a resolution that the mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Kimberly Horn and Associates, Inc., for RFQ professional engineering services for a lead service line inventory and compliance, phase one with a not-to-exceed amount of seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution?
Second.
I got a motion and two seconds.
I won, I beat you.
I think Councilman Robinson got that one, all right, any further discussion, guys? This is something that the EPA, we have no choice to do this, which I a hundred percent agree with, this should be done, you know, you got places like Detroit that started this wave, this movement, where our kids are healthy, and we're not getting a lead brain, which is very poisoning, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number fifteen, a resolution that the mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Krebs Engineering and Associates for professional engineering services and for RFQ water, wastewater treatment plant headworks improvement with a not-to-exceed amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number sixteen, a resolution that the mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a temporary construction easement and purchase option between the city of Fairhope, grantee and the Bible Way Holiness Church grantor for a non-exclusive temporary construction easement. This is to test our water wells, guys, we spoke about this in the workshop, in the work session.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
It says authorize a temporary construction easement and purchase options, what, what are purchase options?
Yep.
But it, it gives you the authorization to execute them, this resolution does.
Like a purchase option, like a.
It's in the agreement, it's in the agreements attached to the resolution.
Still have to come back to the council.
Okay, yeah, it's just a, it's a.
I just do want to write a blank check.
Nope, it's a brooch, it's an introduction to a particular.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just a brooch, all right. Okay, guys, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number seventeen, a resolution that the mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a temporary construction easement and purchase option between the city of Fairhope, grantee and the Baldwin County Board of Education grantor for the following non-exclusive temporary construction easement.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number eighteen is, yes, agenda item number eighteen, a resolution that until further notice and until feasible studies are completed, the city utility department will not issue availability certificates for sewer services to new applicants outside the corporate limits of the city of Fairhope. Let's see, we have, and, we changed some language, I thought. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Have you got, you want me to read it?
Yes, please, 'cause it's a small copy, I can't read it.
Okay, yeah, I figured you had the small print, sorry.
Small thing.
Yeah, so it goes on to say additionally has.
Wrong guy to have that.
You got, you got to bring the large type addition.
Well, it was a, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay, it goes on to say additionally has alternate sewer services, including but not limited to septic tanks, aerobic lagoons, hydrographic, or hydrograph lagoons, trench filters, alternate commercial services, et cetera, are not subject to inspection or permitting, and do not meet the stringent standards of the city of Fairhope, an applicant using any of these alternate sewer types or services will not be eligible for annexation into the corporate limits of the city of Fairhope.
Thank you, Council Burrell. All right, guys, is there any further, we spoke about this in depth in the work session, is there any further discussion on this topic, for those that came in late, we removed some language, so we replaced it with, with the resolution that Council Burrell just read. Is there any further discussion about this, guys?
Nope.
All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay?
You have a motion and a second.
Ma'am, did I not get a motion?
I make a motion, we approve this resolution.
Second.
All right, very good, all right, I thought we had a motion and a second, all right, very good, thank you, motion and a second, no further discussion, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries, thank you, guys, keep me straight, Lisa, keep me straight, all right, agenda item number nineteen, a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of the lights and poles for the Greeno Road median between Sports Marina State Route one oh four from Gresco, for a not-to-exceed cost of two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars and two hundred dollars, and authorizes procurement without formal bid based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, section forty-one, sixteen fifty-one B seven.
So moved.
All right, motion is.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Now, Marcus, I don't have to put the source well on this one, correct? Very good, all right, very good, all right, motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. All right, agenda item number twenty, resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of weathering steel poles from Meyer Utility Structures for a not-to-exceed cost of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars, and authorizes procurement without formal bid based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, section forty-one, sixteen B seven, this is a sole source provider. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. All right, Ben, put the lights up, brother. Agenda item number twenty-one, resolution to award bid number twenty-four zero zero nine, new Sherman and Rally Bullwell Wire Tension or Equivalent to Southcom with a total bid proposal not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand dollars, seven hundred and nine dollars, all right?
Moved to award the bid?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Especially since it's fifteen thousand under budget.
Fifteen under budget.
Unless they went to the Richard Johnson School of Estimating. Everything's under budget.
It was only one bid, though, but that was good, it was fifteen under, yeah, all right, all in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay? All right, motion carries, they have the tension pull, all right. Agenda item number twenty-two, resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement for a contractor Bagby and Russell Electric Company, Inc., to replace the traffic controller cabinet at the intersection of Fairhope Avenue and Bancroft Road for a not-to-exceed cost of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. We'll get our light back, guys.
So moved.
All right, you got a second, somewhere down this line, all right, a motion and a second, all in favor, any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number twenty-three, a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves Mayor Sherri Sullivan selection of Pyro Production, Inc., as professional consultant for RFQ design and production of the firework display for the New Year's Eve twenty twenty-four pursuant to Code of Alabama Pyrotechnic Shooter Law, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract with an amount not to exceed twelve thousand dollars. We're gonna have a good time.
Make a motion, we approve the Pyrotechnic Shooter.
That motion?
All right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Does this include, this is design and, and production, and it doesn't include the cost of the fireworks, right, or does it?
Yeah.
Is it, it's total? Seems like it's cheaper than it has been.
Or it stayed the same.
New Year's is maybe not as big as before.
It's not about the same, then, okay.
Yep, stayed the same, at one point, when we first, it was way, then it came up to this number, looked like it's holding tight, yeah, all right, I have a motion and a second, no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number twenty-four, a resolution that the mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract between the city of Fairhope and Music Garden to provide music entertainment at the Fairhope New Year's Eve twenty twenty-four celebration for a not-to-exceed amount of eight thousand, five hundred dollars, and authorize the city treasurer to pay the eight thousand, five hundred dollars payable to Music Garden with execution of contract prior to the performance, exempt from formal bidding per Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, section forty-one, sixteen fifty-one A three.
Second.
I motion and a second, any further discussion? And the band is Ready or Not, I believe, right, right, mayor? Ready or not, let's go, that's right, that's right, here we go, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries, all right, we're removing, we'll continue to talk about agenda item number twenty-five, so we're gonna take that one off. Agenda item number twenty-six, request Randy Wright on behalf of the Friends of Fairhope Public Library requesting permission to serve alcohol at an annual chocolate and champagne gala, or gala, twenty twenty-four on Sunday, January, Saturday, excuse me, guys, Saturday, January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, from seven PM to nine thirty PM in the Fairhope Public Library.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, look like we're getting champagne and chocolate in the library, motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries, chocolate and champagne, wow, all right, we added a agenda item here, and this, yeah, this one, all right, let's see, all right, so it's a resolution that the city of Fairhope voted to procure materials for the batting cages for the recreation department, and the concrete is available for direct procurement through the South Alabama Purchasing Association, which has been nationally bid eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars, and the lumber and forming material from Creole Construction is under five thousand, which is four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars, bear with me, guys, I apologize, therefore do not have to be let out for bid, the total not-to-exceed cost is sixteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars, that is not budgeted. Okay, we missed this one, guys, in the work session, Pat, you wanna come tell us a little bit about this one? And thank you, council, for letting this walk on.
Yes, thank you for your consideration to walk this on, I'm sorry for the last minute notice, just trying to help Fairhope Youth Baseball get these cages built, they're investing about seventy-five thousand dollars of their own money to finish out the cages, but I've always tried to help the youth leagues erect things to do improvements to the, to our parks, and I thought that this would be a significant improvement, adding two cages to the new baseball fields that we built this spring, so I appreciate your consideration, it's eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars in concrete material, they are paying a contractor to pour the slabs and erect the rest of the cages, and put nets and artificial turf in them. Yes, yes, I, I have some money in a capital improvements project that we will not be using all of, so it's a matter of moving a line item from budget to another line item.
Okay, very good, very good, council?
Where would I, they're gonna be, up on the hill, Atlanta? They're gonna be located?
Yeah, so they're both behind Field One, which would be the field in the northwest corner.
Yeah.
So they're basically up in the tree line, one is behind the right field fence, and one is behind the center field fence.
Is that somebody, is that back up somebody's backyard?
No, we still have a good-sized buffer there, 'cause disc golf is still playing around the edges of it, so we're not right up against their yard, no. It doesn't interfere, they're gonna be able to continue to play those holes, it's gonna add a little bit more of a challenge.
Tell you what, if I was in my backyard and I heard tink, 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 you know, five thousand times a day, trying to get a nap.
You'd already be hearing it right there, anyway.
Yeah, okay, guys, great discussion.
I make a motion to approve?
Very good.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any other discussion, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? All right, congratulations, kids, motion carries. All right, agenda item number twenty-eight is public participation, you have a maximum of three minutes, please, if you're gonna repeat, if people are saying the same things, let one person be the spokesman, and get that information out.
Good evening, Doug Greenard, you've got the address, 'cause I've been here before.
Say it again, though, please.
Sure, three eleven Wakefield Avenue, Fairhope, Alabama three six five three two.
Thank you, Doug.
I wonder if the Friends of the Fairhope Library at their gala are going to make alcohol, champagne available to young people, kids, hey, why not? Because they already make pornography available, and yet, when Mr. Conyers was at the meeting as the liaison, they just jammed forth their policy, which was they're not gonna move books, and these are books that we discussed, and Mr. Conyers himself said that these things he would not even think about reading to his children, they are pornographic, we're not trying to ban books, we're trying to move books to the appropriate place, and yet, through all of this, we have heard zero, zero from the mayor, zero from the city council, what is your stance, what are you doing about it, do you approve of it, do you condone it? Because we've heard nothing. To me, this material is ridiculously inappropriate, and to not have any activity, no action, nothing done on behalf of this city is condoning it, it's giving it a hall pass, and that is wrong. So I would expect to hear something from someone, to do something about this situation, so my question is, are you going to? Or are you just gonna stay silent and give them a hall pass? That's my question, would love to hear an answer, I'll be sitting right here.
Is it Doug, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Doug, we appreciate your passion, we really do.
No, it's not my passion, this is pornography that is being made available to children.
I'm talking about your passion.
Let me say one other thing, 'cause I still have a minute.
Well, you wanted to ask us to talk.
Yeah, I do, so give me one minute, and then I'll ask you, yes, sir.
Well, I'm done, go ahead, you talk.
That's fine, that's fine, yeah, I've still got one more minute.
Okay.
If I stood in the hallway of the library, and I began distributing material that was pornographic to ten, eleven, twelve. pornographic to ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen year olds, how long would it take for me to be arrested? Pretty quick. But for some reason, does our library have the ability, some level of a hall pass, to make this material available to impressionable kids and no repercussions? That's all I have to say. I would love to hear your comments. I just wanted to add that one thing.
So I got one, Mr. Doug, I got one question. Has the nation arrested these authors? Has the nation, as these books are circulated and published, has the nation arrested the authors? Just a question. No, I'm asking you a question. Can you answer that question? I want to know, because if they, if they've arrested them for child pornography, then you're a hundred percent correct.
I don't know that they have.
Really? Why is that? So do you think that the nation is so corrupt? Do you think that the nation is so corrupt that they would allow child pornography to go out into the world in public libraries and no one get arrested with all the commotion and all the light put on these books? Do you really believe that?
I believe that they should be.
No, no.
If they're making it available to children, it's inappropriate.
I get it. Now, that's an opinion, right?
It's not an opinion, it's a fact.
Well.
So a thirteen year old can't walk into the corner liquor store and purchase a pornographic magazine or cannot walk into.
They're not diagnosing these books as pornographic is what I'm trying.
Well, they're not, but, but certainly anybody with any level.
But you're, you're claiming that we're allowing pornographic, so I want you to stop saying that we, us as humans with children, as parents, are allowing pornographic. No, we're, so that's your opinion.
But you've made no public statement whatsoever, none whatsoever. What is your stance? I would like to know. These are taxpayer dollars that are funding these books that are being put in this library. I would like to know where the ninety thousand dollars every year that this city council approves that goes to that library. I would like to know what your stance is. Mr. Conyers says that he would never even dream about reading a book.
I think you're putting some words in my mouth a little bit.
No, 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 I'm not. That's what you told me.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you're. You asked if I would read these to children as a bedtime story, and I said, no, I said, this is probably not, probably wouldn't be something I would necessarily have my kids read. But then again, I also had, we had a lot of conversation. I said, not everybody has the same beliefs, and everybody is going through different things. I think that each parent can decide somewhat what is acceptable for their children to read.
So if children go to the library without parental supervision and can walk right in and, and look at pornographic material without any parental supervision, that's not what we're talking about.
Well, I don't think it's pornographic by the definition.
Pornography, yes.
Pornography would define as.
Yeah, well, then you haven't been over there.
Yeah, we, I, I did. I went over. I must say, I went over. And, and, and it's graphic, the books are graphic, but pornography, they have context. So you have to put the context with what they're trying, but be that as it may. So from what I understand, there was a process, there was a process that, that we followed up on, and it went through a process. There was a reading and a review, and there was multiple people on the board that decided that the books were where they're supposed to be.
Oh, those were professional librarians, yes. And I guess they're professional because they get paid.
But, but Mr. Doug, you said that we didn't do anything. You keep putting the missing. So what I'm asking, if you're gonna tell the story, just tell the whole story.
I'm telling the whole story.
But we did. We went through a professional process to review these books, just as everyone asked, and it was done.
Who did the process? It was professional librarians.
All right, three minutes up. Now, who's next? Thank you, sir.
Bless you.
I received that blessing. Thank you.
I'm not gonna repeat, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay.
Charles Wilson, four eighty-nine Bartlett Avenue, Fairhope. Mayor, city council, I'd like this document I'm going to hand to the clerk to be provided to each of you and to the Board of Trustees of the library, because it happens to be the federal law on obscenity. I don't think they know what it is.
Okay.
Because I heard their statement that we have reviewed it. It meets all the community standards. It's artistic. It's cultural. You were sitting there. You heard what they said. Now, the Board of Trustees has not reviewed anything. They immediately approved what the library said they did, and it was passed. So I'd like for the, the library directors, the professional librarians. And there's a section that says about minor children. I'm tired of people calling children young adults. They're minors. An adult starts at eighteen years of age in this country. I'm praying that our legislatures will pass the law to remove the prohibition against libraries doing this. They, they do have a hall pass. Anything they put in there is okay, even though it's defined here as not okay. It's a federal law. In fact, you know Alabama has a law that if you put smut on a bumper sticker, you can be arrested? You say, well, that's different than the library. No, it's not. It's a public place, and children do have access to books. And all we're asking is, please, move them so the adult parent has to check it out. Don't think that's unreasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. All right, anybody else? Public participation.
Good evening, Carol Wilson, four eight nine Bartlett Avenue, Fairhope, Alabama, three six five three two. I'm one of the challengers, as you well know, of two of the books. I'm asking tonight that the city council consider passing a resolution that no public building shall provide a platform for the distribution and circulation of obscene objectionable materials to minor children, and here is why. And I'm submitting this resolution for your consideration, which, by the way, another city council in Baldwin County is considering this resolution this week. At the December twenty twenty-three meeting of the Fairhope Public Library Board of Trustees, the trustees addressed one of my appeals for reconsideration of the books Sold and Lighter Than My Shadow. The trustees did not provide a review of the materials as required by library policy or state that a review of the book Sold or Lighter Than My Shadow had been made by them. A motion was simply put forward to accept the decision of the library director for which a second was provided. There was no call for discussion by the chair. Without a review of the material, without a call for discussion, and without any question to the challengers who were present at the board meeting, myself included, the Fairhope Public Library Board of Trustees unanimously approved a motion to accept the library's decision to keep the books shelved where they are. The challenged book Sold, which I've mentioned to you several times, contains the multiple sexual assault and violent brutality towards a minor child sold into sex slavery to pay off family debt. I was going to read into the record the objectionable materials, but there are minors in the room, and I hold good judgment that they should not be exposed to this material. The bar has been lowered substantially, city council, on good judgment. That these books remain where they are shelved remains questionable. The library trustees purposely set aside with marked indifference to any citizen concern, all in order to support the American Library Association's agenda of the children's right to read policy. This policy positions itself that children have the right to read whatever materials the library director and library board of trustees permit without any regard to supporting parental control. Asking for a book to be shelved in a different location is not a form of censorship. I do ask that you please consider this resolution, and I do submit the books, a brief book review of those that will be staying in our children's library. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Anybody else? Public participation? All right.
I'll be brief, because I didn't.
Oh, I didn't see you. I'm sorry, Ms. Welcome.
Rebecca Bryant, one oh three Blakeney Avenue, Fairhope, Alabama.
Yeah, go ahead, Rebecca.
Um, I'll be, I'll be brief, because I didn't intend, I didn't know, I sort of knew this was happening, but I hadn't seen it, and I'll admit that I had not watched previous city council sessions, so I hadn't experienced it. But I thought I would get up, because I, I do think there are a lot of Fairhopers who are not coming to these meetings, who support the process that just happened with the library, who support the free exchange of ideas, and who are deeply, deeply concerned and afraid of the idea of small subcommittees defining, you know, censoring and defining books, what is acceptable and what is not acceptable. I, not to make light of it, but I feel a little bit like I just stepped into the, the set of the movie Footloose. I'm like, I hope we can keep dancing in Fairhope. You know, I, we moved, I mean, and that, sorry, that, but that's what it feels like. We, we moved here because Fairhope has such a rich tradition of the open exchange of ideas and the supports of the, support of the arts, and really strong thinkers, you know, being the first leaders in this town, and people coming from around the world to learn about what was happening in Fairhope. And I'm, I'm concerned that we might be moving away from that. And I just, it's, it's a hard position to be in, to have to sit up here and, and hear very passionate, you know, passionate thoughts, and everybody is welcome to their opinions and thoughts, but they're not welcome to limit what is in the, the public for everyone else to read and consume. They can, they cannot read it themselves. They can keep their children away from it themselves. But anyway, I support what we all have done, and I support our library. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rebecca. Jay. Mr. Councilor Robinson, do I need to just read this out?
Yeah, please.
All right, so I can read it, but we're, we're gonna go now on agenda item number twenty-five, which is an executive session. I'm gonna read this to you guys. As a city attorney, I, Marcus E. McDowell, I hereby request that Fairhope City Council go into executive session based on the Alabama Code thirty-six twenty-five A seven eight six to discuss the consideration the city is willing to offer or accept when considering the purchase, sale, exchange, lease, or market value of real property. The discussion could have a determin, detrimental effect upon the competitive position of the city in negotiations if the matter was discussed in public. A thirty-six twenty-five A seven eight three to discuss controversies not yet being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated or imminently likely to be litigated if the governmental body pursues a purposed course of action. As a city attorney, I hereby request that the city council of the City of Fairhope rise from their regular city council meeting on Monday, December the eleventh, twenty twenty-three, to go into executive session. The city council shall be in executive session for approximately forty-five minutes. At the end of the executive session, the city council shall return to the city council chamber to resume the regular city council meeting. I don't, is there no action? There will be no action, guys, so, all right. Thank you.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. All right, we shall. To adjourn, guys.
We don't have enough people. Oh, we have three, yeah, yeah, yeah. Did you move?
So moved.
I second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries.
All right, good job.